So I'd like to begin our meeting at 6:31. Welcome, everyone. So the first portion of our meeting is a carousel meeting for new board members or the public who may be watching or attending. Just a brief reminder, this is a different type of meeting than our regular SU meetings. All three boards will call the meeting to order and then we will conduct the first portion of this meeting as a union of three boards, all members included. Then we'll break up and move to our respective rooms to continue our local board meetings. So I'd like to, I call the Westford portion of this board to order. May I have the other chairs call their respective boards to order?
Well, seeing as PC has a quorum, I will call the provincial committee to order.
And I call the U46 school board to order.
Alright, thanks, folks. Before we begin, any updates or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, moving to our item number two, visitors and staff to be heard. Are there any visitors or staff who would like to address the board?
Speak or ever forever hold their peace.
I saw some nice waves from some people, that's good. So let's move on to our common meeting topic portion. Item number four, the S-Back update.
So we have Amy Cole here tonight and Amy presented at our last carousel and before we had received the state results for the S-Back. So she's back again tonight to provide another update for you.
So quick, it doesn't even involve a PowerPoint. You remember last month I shared with you how we were doing in terms of our state assessment results, our local assessment results? I think it was a quick glimpse after a long board meeting. But we didn't have our state results for S-Back, so I wanted to provide that to you tonight so you can see comparison. And Colin Flanders did a nice job, I think, of doing a write-up about our school district's results in this week's paper. I just wanted to point a couple things to you. So you had already seen, and it's posted on our website, the comparison from year to year. If you remember, some of the things we picked up on were that we saw some big gains in grade three, which we were pretty pleased with. We saw some grades that were pretty stable. We looked at groups that were going from year to year in terms of cohorts. What you're gonna see on this sheet is how did we do against a state comparison. Something to keep in mind that's not on this document are end counts. If you look at a school like Westford, some of those end counts represent as low as 16 kids. And so we're really careful when we look at large increases and large decreases in schools that have smaller end counts like that. But it's handy to take a peek. So you can see that we are doing pretty well in terms of state comparison. We're also able to average together how we did grades three through eight and kind of look at that as a snapshot. Last year, I think we were 68, this year we're 69 percent of our students for English Language Arts have passed our state assessment. And over in math, 61 percent, which was an increase. And then you can see our high school results are comparable. You might notice if you pay close attention to detail in the Essex reporter, he reports 76 percent at our state results for English Language Arts in grade 11. There was an error in a document that was put out by the state, so this is the right answer. And I said, Colin, you don't have to retract. I love that we're 76. We're 73. So in case you're somebody who pays attention to that, I'll have these results posted on our website. We just had to confirm it with the data folks over the state to make sure that we knew which was the right number. We don't have science, we have unconfirmed and embargoed science MECAP results. Those will go live on Wednesday. I can't discuss them with you tonight, unfortunately. The timing was off by two days. Do you have any questions?
Do you ever look at this comparing like our school district with other school districts in the state that are of similar size?
Yes, I mean, we do a couple things. They produce this in a spreadsheet that allows us to sort. So it's hard to not sort all the schools and see where we fall. Because it's information. So we typically feel pretty good about where we fall in terms of, and I tend to like to look at grade 11 as just a benchmark place. I think we are third in the state, third or fourth in the state for math, and similarly, I think, fourth or fifth for language arts, and that's a good thing to keep an eye on. Then we look at Chittany County schools. So we get a sense of like maybe common kids that may be moving between and how did we do? And then the other piece that we look at is disaggregated information. And that's a piece that I feel really proudly about. We continue to do well comparatively to other schools in terms of the achievement gap for students of poverty. And that's something I want to keep an eye on because that's a similar kind of struggle across schools across the state and I kind of want to see if we're, I guess, beating the odds there. I don't think I answered your question specifically.
No.
We do compare ourselves to like CDU, we compare ourselves to South Burlington. We're usually in the same range, sometimes we move up and down a spot.
But we're all within deviation, okay.
Yep.
Alright, thank you very much, Amy.
You're welcome.
Any further questions, take them to Amy offline.
I guess the only other thing that I'll say is that this information and the information you got last month inform your principals' continuous improvement plans, which you're gonna be hearing about later today, as well as the second piece of data that, or dataset that Erin's gonna be preparing for you, which is how we're doing on our MTSS indicators. So you'll hear more about both of these when you sit with your principals.
Okay. So we're moving on to agenda topic number five, the MTSS crosswalk with CIPS.
And I do have a PowerPoint that I'm going to walk us through. So bear with me while I pull this up.
Can you?
Slideshow.
Can you just cover the acronyms?
I'm going to do that. Part of what I'm going to do tonight is just do a brief review with you about multi-tiered system of supports, what it is, what we use it for, where it's come from for us. And then I will walk you through the crosswalk that is on your agenda. So the multi-tiered system of supports is a framework in Vermont that has been developed and it is a framework that is aligned with the research base associated with school focus points that cause student achievement to improve. And as we studied this framework, and it's also been a framework that has been used by the agency of education and by schools across Vermont to use as a focus point, we agreed after studying it in 2013 to use it as a set of standards for improvement for CCSU schools. The schools have all self-assessed for the last two years around all of the standards in the MTSS self-assessment. And we also spent extensive time considering our progress this summer as a team around this framework. You'll recall, those of you who were here for it, it has been a part of the, I think, the Board of Superintendent's work plan for the last couple of years. It's definitely been a leadership framework for us. I've provided you datasets a couple of times on it. Again, this is the graphic that some of you may recognize. It's the components of MTSS. And again, it's the research-based, it's based in the research around school improvement. We certainly see it as our work to improve our schools specific to this framework. Whenever you're trying to create improvement, you always need a way to consider where you're trying to reach in order to cause that improvement. And that's what MTSS, the MTSS framework, has provided for us. I've done a couple of presentations to the boards about the multi-tiered system of supports framework, and you're going to see some of it here tonight. If you want more information, though, I've provided you with a link to the full field guide that will explain multi-tiered system of supports. And also, if you would like, you're more than welcome to ask of me the last presentation that I gave to the board that sort of walks everyone through it that I've provided here. I just wanted to talk with you a little bit about the relationship. One of the hallmarks of tonight, right, will be your school action, the continuous improvement plans, previously known as school action plans. And what I wanted to do is take a moment to draw a relationship between the framework and the continuous improvement plans that you'll see. So each school develops focus points for the school year in their continuous improvement plan. The agency has provided a template, and I think that was shared at another board meeting as well. And it is the template that we've used to, all of us, all of the principals, to write the continuous improvement plans. And within that template, it asks you to align your tasks that are associated with your improvement goals with the 31 standards, if you will. They're called components of MTSS. And it's important for you to know that there are 31 components, standards, in this framework, and that's a lot, right? It's not something that you do in a year. And we're in our second iteration of continuous improvement plans that are aligned with the multi-tiered system of support standards. And so, you know, we've talked as a team about focusing year by year. And when we go into this a little bit further, I'm gonna talk with you a little bit about last year and how it's different this year in reference to the work. So what follows, and I'm gonna hand this out to you as well, I hope I have enough copies. If not, you can maybe put one next to each other and share. I created a crosswalk of all of the standards in the MTSS framework and then noted which schools are working this coming year on which particular standards. So you can see the focus points, both for individual schools as you consider the continuous improvement plans and what standards we're working on in the MTSS framework and working on improvement efforts around. And then also you can see where we are in common. One of the things I'll say, and I did a full review of all of the continuous improvement plans, the incredible body of work that's been done in all of our schools around these plans, and crosswalked what was noted as the primary standard for each task that you'll see when you review your continuous improvement plans in your individual board meetings. While an X is a primary checkmark, I would also say that there are times where I was looking and I thought, oh, this, you know, this really could fall here or here, and the school has chosen to use this standard. So this is a representation of the primary focus points of your continuous improvement plans across all of your CCSU schools. You will see a couple of areas where we are all in common, looking at something very specifically. And the first example, in the first of the five characteristics of a full MTSS, of the full MTSS framework, is this number seven, evaluating MTSS on a regular basis. We're all doing that. That's something that all of the schools are doing. Yes.
Just one question.
Yeah.
So is the goal for all the schools to have a check in all of these boxes?
No. Well, over five years, yes, but not in one year, no. Does that help?
Okay.
So that was my point about, you can't possibly do all of this in a year. Like, you can look at this and say, wow, that, you know. But we are assessing ourselves in all of these areas every year, and we are choosing over time to incorporate improvement based on our self-assessment in these particular areas. The teams in the schools make these decisions. So the principal with the support of their teachers and their planning team make the decisions about the next steps based on self-assessment data that they have collected, given that where are we on these standards? Does that answer the question?
Yes, but, so are you reviewing that and do you have a statement of whether you influence on which they're working on?
Do I have an influence on which they're working on?
Yeah, what they're working on to make sure that we're kind of all moving forward at the same pace, or?
Yes. This framework serves that purpose at it, in its core, right? Is to say, okay, we've agreed as a full leadership team that this is the framework that we're going to align our improvement efforts to, and this is going to keep us centered. We all have agreed that we are going to assess ourselves, and so that's where you see that common set of Xs across the bottom there. That's something we're all doing. And you'll see some other areas where that's true as well, where you'll see Xs all the way across. And those are those systemic areas of focused improvement that we're trying to make. But it also means that schools have the opportunity to self-identify particular areas where they either feel like, we've done a lot of work on this, and so it's time to focus over here. And that might not always be the same for every school in the system. Also, I would say that developmentally, there may be different focal points, right? Where you talk about a pre-K preschool as opposed to the high school and, you know, what the focus points might be. But it does allow us to look across a set of standards at the areas that we are really all focused on, and then to talk collectively. And we do that in our ELT meetings. We talk collectively about, you know, these particular areas.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe Erin, you can speak to number five and our focus on that last year as we develop local assessment plans.
Yes. So, and I'll bring this up again because one of the components is all about assessment. And last year, we had a really intensive focus on assessment, you know, thinking about all of the writing prompts that we did and the assessment that we did, all of the assessment planning work that you all have seen results of, all of the local assessment plan pieces, the purchase and implementation of admin and form. So you can touch a lot of the assessment pieces, and when we assessed ourselves around growth in that area, we said, wow, we've really grown a lot in that particular area. And so I think schools are rating themselves as much stronger in the area of assessment, which is starting to sort of shift their focus to other areas. For example, and you'll see this too as we go through, the area of effective collaboration, and I will go ahead and click through it. That was not a significant focus from, it's not that it wasn't a focus at all, it just wasn't the primary focus. We were really focused on assessment and high-quality instruction intervention. And when we self-assessed, we said, wow, you know, we haven't, we improved, but we didn't improve as much in the area of effective collaboration as a system. And so what you see as a result of that particular conversation is schools really focusing in on those standards around effective collaboration, and you see a lot of Xs and a lot of commonality in this particular area this year. Because in our self-assessment, we said, this, you know, this isn't something we've grown as much, maybe that might be more of a focus this year. But then the principals take that back and lead that with their teams in their schools to create that forward movement. So this is an area that you can see where we're really focused as a system, particularly around student outcomes and engagement, as well as implementing structures that promote strong school-family relationships, right?
Can you clarify for me again on the "we" and the "our" kind of thing? So who's doing the self-assessment?
Each of the schools has an MTSS leadership team. That team self-assesses each of these areas, and they collect evidence about why they rated themselves in a particular way. That information is then all collected back, I do that body of work, collect all of that back, and then we put it into a framework where we consider it as a whole system as well. So you, so that gives us an opportunity as an entire educational leadership team to think about ourselves as a whole, but it's all based in the assessment that's done at the building level with those MTSS leadership teams, thinking about where each school is in reference to each of these particular standards.
So the conclusion of the self-assessment at the school level is concurred by you?
The self-assessment at the school level is submitted to me. I pull together the results and then move that back into the educational leadership team for consideration. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm just, I'm wondering the sense of assessment, whether it goes to you through a self-assessment tool, but you have an ability to look globally to see whether those assessments are there or not.
And all of them were completed, and I was able to pull themes and provide those themes back to the team for consideration. And so while there are some numerical ratings that we do, each school does, we also, again, collect that evidence, and I'm able to look across the evidence and say, okay, this is what the numbers say, but this is also what the evidence says about why the numbers say that. And that's all, I think the reason we wanted to share this work with you is because this is how we're staying tight as a system, but also providing the opportunity for each school to address its unique needs, because there are unique needs in our schools. But it's important that we think also systemically. Marla?
You said this was a five-year plan?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm curious, and then Judy pointed out number five, under systematic and comprehensive approach had been worked on last year. Is there a way on the plan so board members can follow along? Like, would you be putting in there something that means it's been accomplished, like year one, year two?
Yeah, I thought about that as I was doing this body of work. We really wanted to develop a crosswalk for you to show you the connection between the framework and the continuous improvement efforts of schools, so you could see that connection to a larger framework, but each individual school is improving inside of their own plan. We didn't do this particular presentation last year. You know, I think it would be fair to say we're still learning the power of this opportunity, what it can look like, how we can use the data. And so, and also, at the same time, our continuous improvement plan or school action plan template has grown in stronger connection to this body of work as well. So while we are growing into this, we didn't set out with, okay, every single continuous improvement plan task from two years ago was aligned with an MTSS indicator. We didn't do that. So it's hard to present it this way from back then. Do you see what I mean? But I think that over time, if we keep going with this, we will be able to see the improvement. And if there's a real desire to start to think about where did we begin and where are we now associated with these standards, I mean, I, you know, that is work that we're doing as leaders in the system. Judy, do you want to add to that at all?
I would just add that the reason for this presentation and format is because we wanted to make sure when you listen to your principals share their continuous improvement plans, you see the direct connection to the MTSS framework, because we've been talking about it for two years. So it was an accountability element to share. At a recent Vermont Superintendent's Association meeting, the state has provided yet another continuous improvement template. And in this template, although they had the MTSS last year included it, this year they're including quality standards and an alignment with that as well. So what's helpful about this is we're able to see the complexity of the pieces of frameworks that when you see goals and sometimes continuous improvement plans at your school level, you might sit back and wonder, well, how is that connected? So this was an intentional means of connecting to the framework. So you see that we're still staying focused on this framework as a guiding practice. Marla, did you?
Well, I'm just curious how you're going to present it in the future as part of five, like, is this considered year one?
Hmm.
You know, so like future boards, I'm thinking of being Essex-Westford School District and all 10 members coming in with Town of Essex schools. Is there going to be something that shows like X1 meeting the first year, because you're saying it's a five-year plan, and going to the regional meeting last year where Rebecca Holcomb talked about all the things they are checking off on the schools, the quality review?
Mm-hmm.
I just wondered, it does make it easier, I think, as a board member to see something like this.
I have no idea how that whole process is gonna evolve, but there's certainly.
The new superintendent will be.
Yeah. At least there's groundwork and a history and the evolution of our plans available. And we have, oh my goodness, at least 10 years of improvement plans from, actually more than that, back at a time when we were doing one-plan planning. So we have a strong history of improvement efforts. I think the most important piece of this is that our improvement efforts in the past have been determined at the central office level or the educational leadership level. What's great about this framework is people can look at the comprehensive nature of the framework, and teams within their schools can identify, this is really where we need to focus and grow and show improvement. And that's what we're trying to find a way to use a framework instead of, and have it tighter within a framework. So we're all within that for our own accountability sake as a system.
Yes.
So this is the high-quality instruction and intervention. This continues to be a significant focus for all of our schools. You can see number 15 in reference to using relevant assessment data to differentiate and provide instruction that is responsive to student needs, focusing on all student successes. To be able to meet benchmarks is a significant focus across the system. Here is the comprehensive assessment system, and you'll recall, I spoke a little bit earlier about the fact that this was a significant focus for us over the last year, two years, really. And the sense that I'm, I would say that we are feeling stronger in this area. Our self-assessment is showing the results of that growth. And you see fewer focus points around building that inside of the MTSS framework in this year's continuous improvement plans. Well-designed professional learning is important for all schools, and, you know, these are particular areas of focus that you can see school by school. And then this last slide is just a pie chart of where is the sort of most focused. This is based on the number of tasks associated with each of the five areas. And so you can see that 30 percent of our focus is high-quality instruction and intervention. You can see an increased focus on effective collaboration and the systemic and comprehensive approach with less of a focus, as I had said, on the balanced assessment. So this is just a precursor so that as you listen to your comprehensive, your continuous improvement plan presentations from school principals, that you have a systemic context for that conversation. And that was really the purpose of this dialogue, although, you know, if there are more questions about MTSS, or, you know, I think that was a great point, Marla, about how are we going to say, is this finished? If you read these standards, most of them are probably never finished, right? You can always improve in all of these areas, but, you know, which ones are we focusing on when, and which ones are our strengths? And are we at that place where we can say all of these are really strong across all of our schools? We can't say that yet, and that is the work going forward.
Basically, just my concern is knowing how the state's going to come in and assess us.
Yeah.
Because I know last year, they just picked a few districts. So I'm, I, when I heard you say it's over a five-year period, I was just, also, how does the state look at it? And when do they consider you begin the first year and end it a five-year or keep going?
And in the meantime, the Education, the Every Student Succeeds Act reauthorized. So now they're in a place of looking at their reviews, their education quality reviews, and rethinking what that may look like, which I think created some of the changes in the CIP template that they provided us. So it's really a shifting playing field that we've been maneuvering for a few years now. Those of you that attended your school report nights, I know Fleming School and I was in attendance for Mr. Rudin's, they were able to show data with direct correlation to some of the goals in their action plans. And I think that that brings it full circle to show where they're improving. So we'll make sure that the school report data is something that you'll have access to as well, so you can continue to make sense of what does a continuous improvement plan look like, what are the standards of practice that we're embedding within it using MTSS, and what's the data showing us through our comprehensive assessment, both local and our S-Back data, which again, is new data to us, new testing. So in some ways, we've been able to create some stability with a very changing structure around us. So it can show you that our results are still showing that the poverty piece is still something that we need to work on across the state. But again, and I just received it last week, hope to share with board members the PowerPoint that Rebecca Holcomb put together that shows the inequity across our state. And of our 215 schools, there's still 47 schools that have less than, that have 11 or less students that can't be included in a dataset. So those inequities are difficult as a state for us to wrap our heads around. So those inequities are difficult as a state for us to wrap our heads around. She did a great PowerPoint in breaking down the SBACK results, helping us understand what they mean. So we have that information for you as well, and you can present that at your next meeting if you so desire.
Marla?
Curious, because I know the stress that K through eight schools have felt the last two or three years as we meet with them as the PC. But how is CTE and Essex High School, is the stress level really high, or have things?
Oh, yes. None are spared. For the first time, actually, at CTE, the last two years, Bob Travers has worked to have the students tested at CTE for SBACK, so we're starting to get those results back for a cohort of students. That's just been the last two years since SBACK was administered. So that's been helpful. I think that the whole mandates to Act 77 and multiple pathways, as well as proficiency-based learning, proficiency-based graduation requirements, which is a policy that you'll, at the Essex Westford School District Board, be adopting before the year's over. That work is causing us to have to think more and more about the promise of a unified district, was to look at a K through 12 slash tech continuum of services and educational opportunity for our students, which is essential. And so the high school is really helping us lead the way through proficiency-based learning with the assistance of Great School Partnership and Reed Dyer. And this year, we'll be making a few changes to the grading. And there's a chart, actually, that we can share about what that progression will look like over the next four years for our students, and when they'll be graduating in the class of 2020 under proficiency-based learning graduation requirements. It's actually in the U46 ORB notes tonight. And, you know, and in a lot of ways, this board, when we're all together in Carousel, is a great opportunity, you know, and if you are interested, we could provide that focus at the December meeting about what does that look like across the system, what we're working on, and then how will we merge that moving forward.
I mean, being, I'm a member on Essex Westford School District, I would be very interested because I think as Martha's chairing us through this, is we've got so many other things to be doing. If I can pick up knowledge here, it would help, you know? And it sounds like there's a lot to learn. It's been so many years since I've been involved with the high school.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Having monitored its data for a long time at the state and local level, the poverty piece hasn't changed very much. So out of this, I come back to a question. Have we accepted the poverty results as they are? And if not, how is MTSS ensuring continuous improvement and in providing those results back to the boards?
I think if you go back to the quality instruction, Erin, it shows that, there we go. Where, Judy? Into the quality instruction. It shows how --
Which number?
This whole area. Have equitable opportunities, appropriate access to demanding content, standards, high expectations, excellent instruction. These are the areas that we're focused in on in trying to, the differentiation in instruction, close that gap. And then the students who require more intensive or specialized instruction, the tiered approach, and making sure that there's interventions sooner now than ever before. We've been able to intervene greatly because of our local assessment plans, where we're assessing more frequently and getting that formative assessment results, knowing that informs instruction, that entails, that tells teachers what they need to do differently or provide additional supports for student groups. So at the, at the school level, you'll hear more about that. This is just an overview, but the specific strategies. And I'll always say that poverty isn't something that schools fix alone.
The other thing I'll add to that is that at the very base of the MTSS framework is a report called Roots to Success that was a comprehensive study done in Vermont, associated with schools that have closed the gap for students who are experiencing poverty in reference to their achievement. And so these particular standards are highly aligned with that report. And so not only everything that Judy said is accurate in reference to how is it that we close that gap, it actually is specifically research-based for that purpose through that study in Vermont as a base.
See, I'm looking for, what are we doing here to help that group? And one of the conclusions I had was that we can't raise the performance of the school unless all these groups are moving forward. So I'm looking for the hard data that shows that that plan is working.
And looking at the achievement gap over time for students who are experiencing poverty is certainly absolutely something we need to be doing. Yes, we do.
So we can, I think we can cover the specifics at each local board meeting when you're in the continuous improvement plan portion of your meetings. Thank you very much, Erin.
Can I say one more thing before we adjourn?
Sure, if we need one more, one more question, have that.
Other question, it's off-topic. But it involves all the boards, so that's why I wanted to say it now.
Oh, sure.
It's just a Nellie Mae planning update.
Yeah, yeah.
So we all know that we have the Nellie Mae initiative. I just wanted to thank the people who have agreed to be part of that team, and thank you to Erin, who helped us to make sure that team was balanced with the right number of community members, board members, and students. And Ben, I think as of today, we're up to six students who will be taking part of this planning team, and we have representation from all of the communities we serve. And so thank you for, all of you, for being part of that and moving forward this work. The meeting starts on Wednesday. It's every night, every Wednesday evening in October for the four meetings, and I look forward to giving you all the update about that after those meetings take place at the end of the month.
Great. Thank you so much, Liz.
Sure.
All right. So we'll have each board go into recess and then reconvene in their respective rooms. Do we have locations?
U46 back in your original spot. PC stays here, and Westford in the seminar room. Thank you.